I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. It's a few minutes of the March 26, 2019, erection of the police. Motion? Mr. Baker.
Second.
Mr. Kerr. Am I yes?
Yes.
Okay. We have Mrs. Smith, if she still may come along. All right, let's go to public comments. Anyone sign in to speak tonight, Bill?
Motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to presentations. Reports. Lenny Romans is on the agenda. So, Mr. Romans, come on up to the podium and you want to talk about the personal training for student athletes. Welcome back.
Nice to be back. I just wanted to come-
Now, understand that tonight, if we don't like what you say, we can sell back. Don't care what you say.
Shouldn't be the yell. We reviewed the policies and we knew when we initially spoke that no doubt there were policies in place that would hinder that. Otherwise, we would never have been asked to discontinue those services. So, I knew that that wasn't something that was done just to be unfair or unjust. My concern now is that, or suggestion, I guess, would rather be, it was a good program. There was children with, parents had talked about their children with ADHD and how they had improved and social anxiety disorder and how they'd improved. Children that wasn't involved in athletics, that was just going for health and wellness and how their lifestyle had improved. There was a lot of improvements made in the quality of life of a lot of young men and young women here in the county. And it's sad that we're not able, based on some of these policies, to be able to continue to provide services like that that are so beneficial to a large number of people. My only consideration, or only thing I would ask you to consider, is maybe to look at those policies because they're going to impact other things, just like was mentioned in your statements at the end. There's a lot of other things that you're going to have to be looking into to see if they violate the same kind of policies and procedures. We don't want to do things to limit great programs and great things that's impacting our young people if there's something we can be proactive. You've mentioned in 1970s that some of these policies impacted decisions that you made while you were principal. Maybe if those policies were in place in 1970, maybe it's something that we as a county need to be proactive and look at and review and make recommendations that not only helps our county, but maybe the state overall. And like I said, I know you guys have got the best interest of the students in the county. I know Kyle, I said 26, he's 24. He's 24 years old and using the degree that he had to help these young people. So, I just want to, one final thing to say, you know, I appreciate what he has done for our youth in our community. Appreciate that you're all taking an interest and being willing to listen, hear that out, and would encourage you to be able to review some of those and see if there's things that we can do to not cut beneficial programs, but be able to continue to add them that would help our young people, not just athletically, but socially help accomplish things in that future. So, based on those policies that Sean sent me, I understand why you had to do what you have to do. It's sad that somebody would force this issue as being so beneficial. So, that's my statement.
I wholeheartedly agree with everything you said. And it was never about Mr. Garrison. Everything I heard, we heard, the comments and the, you know, I had different coaches were talking about how beneficial it would help some of their kids in their whatever sport or activity they were in. So, it was never about that at all. And I agree with you, but just like these, you know, the policies, typically our policies are based on state law or state law policy. And that's, you know, at the end of each one of those, they'll cite different laws and whatever. So, many of those, you know, unless those are changed, our hands are tied. But at the same time, we try to offer some things, like we have a strength and conditioning program. I know it sounds individualized, which is, would be one of-
And it's more geared toward the football program.
Well, although I spoke to Mr. Minkif-
I know it's not, but then it is. And that's okay.
Well, but it's, it's to be open to everyone as much as I asked Mr. Minkif that very question. But what, you know, and what we've tried to do, because really, the way this ethics law is, you know, anybody that's in our position, they are in more jeopardy than we would be, or at least it's of equal problem, because they are violating as an individual, if you're an employee of the school system, you know, you're violating the ethics act, just like we're bound with that, you know, so are all the employees that work for the board or any entity like that. So, I think Mr. Minkif was trying to explain that aspect to you, you know, that this is something that you have to be careful of. But at the same time, and I've heard some comments, I don't know whether Jeff, do you want to talk about any better or not, that maybe there's some alternative that's being explored.
Well, Kyle, I talked to him and he told me that some concerned citizens and he is looking, me and him talked personally, and we didn't want to make this, there was a host of people who would have came to speak on his behalf and I didn't feel that that was the most beneficial thing for Kyle, for our students. We, it's good that he has that support, he has that character, he's earned that with the reputation that he has. He told me that he's finalizing some things and there may be an alternative to that here being announced in the near future, so.
He was optimistic.
He was very optimistic. And he's, he's been very understanding about the guy's situation. He knows that, you know, he did what was initially asked as far as the business license, the insurance, and all those steps to try to be within what was understood initially, the guidelines. So, now he's going even further, making a separate facility and different things like that. So, hoping to be able to keep a talent in our community. We need people like him in our community and I know you guys support that as well, so.
I would just add, and this comes more from my professional life, I have the chance to see the effect of laws that are good until you apply a certain set of facts to them and then they yield a result that just leaves everybody with a bad taste in their mouth. Unfortunately, laws are drafted not to cover every situation, but to cover 98, 99% of the situations and yield, and yield a good result. And if you look at any of these laws individually, if you look at them collectively, overwhelmingly, they would yield a good result if you follow these laws. But then you get this situation, this particular situation, where the end result hurts most everybody, but you have to follow these laws. And it, it's one of the first things you're taught when you go to law school, is that good laws with a certain set of facts often yield results that are unacceptable, which results in, won't go into a legal dissertation, but often results in judges and others taking a law that's clear on its face and twisting and contorting it to get a good result with a certain set of facts. And I mean, that's what we have here. These laws are so clear, though, than this situation. Everyone sitting up here, every one of administration's hands were just openly and obviously tied.
And it, and it's, my only thing is, I think, and I don't know, that it's a sad day when somebody would let, would push an issue that was being so beneficial. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. I mean, and I understand once it's lost your attention, you have, you have to do that, especially when, when the policy is clear, so.
I want to play the devil's advocate for a minute, because believe me, I've given as much thought to this as a lot of, as probably any of you all have, because it bothers me. But let's think about that child from Hamlin's Creek who would love to be able to take advantage of the services Mr. Garrison was offering over here. But his parents, one, maybe they both work, he has two parents, and I'm, this is fictional child, by the way, or, or maybe they don't work, but they don't have the money to pay them nominal, the minimum fee that he was charging. How is that fair to the kids that would love to take advantage of that, but whose parents can't afford the fee, even though it's very small, to use public facilities that all the taxpayers pay for to benefit those private citizens, private children whose parents can afford to get them here and to pay that minimal fee? So, you have to look at we, even if these laws were not here, we as a board and Jeff and Bill as an administration would have to look at it from the perspective of all the kids and all the taxpayers. So, I agree with you that it's sad that the kids that were getting the benefit of this lost it for whatever reason, and I hope there's some solution. You and I talked privately after the last time you were here, after the meeting. But, but causes to use the public facilities, but think about the public as a whole. What is the public? It's all the kids here. Now, I don't know, it's not anything we've talked about. I think this would be a different result, maybe, and looking at these laws, I'm not sure. But if the football program hired him and paid with funds they had generated on their own, hired a personal trainer for the benefit of the football team, but I'm not even sure under these policies and provisions.
It'd have to be very creative.
That even the football team, or even the soccer program, or the basketball program, or girls volleyball could hire him and him use school facilities. I'm not sure, looking at this. So, I hope there is a result that winds up being as good as it was before, maybe better. That's my hope. I just, I mean, I hate that our hands are tied, but they are.
Yeah, my challenge is just to be creative. I know sometimes laws are changed. We see issues with laws that can carve out different set of circumstances and scenarios. Right now, you can't, you can't do anything with that. But to be as proactive as we can, so other programs maybe in the future don't face, because yes, it's public facilities, public funds and things of that nature. But look at our, look at our county. We don't have opportunities. Most of our jobs in, people in Lincoln County are school, state jobs. We don't have a whole lot of business. We don't have a whole lot of opportunities. Sports is one of the biggest things. Athletics and sports is one of the biggest things that Lincoln County offers through buddy league programs and that. We need opportunities for our children to be able to have other avenues to do things in and with our, with our limited facilities and limited structures, infrastructure. Here, we, our children's handcuffs, it's not like Days Valley or Hurricane or some of the larger areas. We just, I just want us to be able to look for opportunities to be able to give our youth a lot of, more choices, not a lot, just more choices to be able to do things, to exercise, to have positive role models, influence, to be able to have healthy friendships that's not encouraging them to do bad things, but encouraging them to do positive things, not just from a pastor's point of view, from a church standpoint, but we just need that positive influence. We need to keep positive people in our community. And I, that's, that's, and I understand.
No disagreement from anyone sitting up here with those things?
And I know that, I know that. I was on the agenda after I read the things, I knew there wasn't anything to be done, but my name is already on there and I just wanted to come and speak for him one last time.
We appreciate it, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a presentation or a report from Mayor David Adkins to discuss the purchasing of a drug dog. David Adkins, that's you.
I see.
Yeah, you gave us something, did you?
No, I did not. You did. I gave you your hand down. I'm here. This is. It doesn't matter, I got my glasses. That's all.
Lenny, can you come bring that for him?
Ultimate working dogs.
You can work as a team. Lenny Long, he is by locals.
I can say the number.
Dollar signs.
I can say the dollar sign. Bill, you want it?
Well, I want to.
Yes.
I think he's going to start it, so I- We were, we were talking about, we've been talking about getting a drug dog. And we, because the town has a police officer in the academy now, and that was the one we were talking about possibly having that dog. Well, after doing some checking and the mayor came over that day and we talked about the dog and basically said, well, that should be your dog. So, you know, we, we said, well, now, we know the initial fee is $4,500 to buy the dog, the training and everything. But then there's some other fees. After talking to Officer Rakes, he talked about you have to have a certain thing in your vehicle. Then, so we contacted this Tracy Landis, who we get the dogs, most people get the dogs from, ultimate working dogs. And actually, Justin and I was going to go see the dog last Friday. And then, and then when we come up, after talking to the mayor, we said, well, now, we all probably need to come get on the same page because there will be more expenses other than this $4,500. And, and so she sent this breakdown, we might look at it, that, you know, the first thing is $4,500, but then you could see a breakdown, the first year of what would be, of course, it'd be quite a bit more in the first year to get the initial, initial equipment and so forth. And then a maintenance after the first year, she put down there of veterinary expenses and food expenses, which was total about $1,000 a year. So, we just all wanted to make sure we was all on the same page and if we get a dog who's taking care of this part, who's taking care of that part, and that's kind of, we didn't want to jump out there and buy a dog and, and not know who was paying for what. So, that's basically what we want to have.
Way to interpret what this says and who's paying for what per this.
Well, I think that's what we were, I think we had discussed, I don't want to speak for more, but I think the board had agreed that, that we would get a dog and pay the initial-
Either the dog or have it trained.
Have it trained, an officer trained.
Yeah, because we've tried to contract with other people to bring in dogs and it just never happens.
Right. That, that was the initial cost, we thought. Then this other added cost, I don't know if we need, if, we're going to have to come up with a memorandum of understanding or something of who's going to do what.
With the town.
With the town, with the town. So, that's the reason we wanted to have the discussion.
Well, a lot of it comes down to who's going to be the dog's handler and what are their preferences as far, because there's a huge variation here in the containment system for the vehicle and in whether you have inside or outside kennel and how you, I mean, I can't see keeping a $5,000 dog outside the kennel. Maybe people do it, but I mean, I'd say this dog's going to live inside if I had any say over it. This drug dog needs to live inside, needs to be pampered, be kind of like a king, because I mean, that's more the cost to take, have a baby to hospital. So, but we didn't think about those things. All joking aside, who's going to handle the dog and what are their preferences? I mean, as far as that containment system in the car. I've seen all three kinds of police vehicles before. Now, I don't, I keep, I don't know. Are there regulations you have to follow? Probably not. I mean, this lady trained for police agencies, so any of these three would probably be acceptable. Obviously, it's, be nice to have something built into your car that costs two grand, but is that what we need? I don't know. Same thing for a kennel. Now, I really, all joking aside, I can't see putting a dog like this outside an outside kennel. Maybe other people do it, but I, I think, I mean, isn't it pretty typical for police dogs to live inside, live with their handler, is their part of family?
Alan Martin.
What's that?
You have to talk to Alan Martin.
I don't know.
He's living in the house, Alan's apartment over there.
I mean, I've never had-
Some places are, apparently some of them not. So, we got to figure that out before he can be, where he's living at now.
Justin, let me ask you, assuming that this were to happen, who would own this dog? The board?
Board.
And then my other question is, if Justin is, he, he would be like the trained handler and all that, right? Where would this dog be able to go?
Outside of schools.
Well, not as, outside, can he go out of Hamlin, I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, only if he gets a call. But I know where you're going to, the other schools.
Yeah.
That's something we have to look at because he might have to be, I'll have to check into that one.
Yeah.
Because I mean, you know, we're talking about- Now, we got to be dispatched for 911 to go, to legally go out of town limits for our insurance to be covered.
That's what I'm thinking.
And that's with, you know, that's like we get a call out for, you know, Officer needs help or whatever, usually on the mastic or guns or something like that, and 911 calls us and they take off. And then that way, that kicks in our insurance for the officer being out of city limits. So, there's probably something that is, because that would be, that would be a purpose and it'd be just a destination, you know, starting back.
Well, I would, I'd like to see us check out something because I'd like for stable of, for the state police, they need to use of the drug dog.
I talked to state police.
And the town of West Hamlin, JJ needs a drug dog, but they would have to kick in something to pay for Justin.
I talked, I did talk to JJ, because I did talk to state police and sheriff department.
Yes.
And state police got thrown, so they said, no, they will not outsource the dog, but they got Charleston Hunting and they'll bring him. And then I think the new sergeant out here, is that right? He's got a bomb dog, don't he? And I don't know whether he's just a bomb dog or, because he came out of school with what a bear, marijuana, like?
At least three weeks.
Yeah. But I think it's just a bomb, or the, the way he's put it. But they said they would. And the sheriff said they probably weren't a chance because, you know, play extra, he said, we can't even get overtime, let me try to pay for, try to get paid for a dog.
You know, in this scenario that Justin would actually be, since it's the dog's handler, be with it, but be, he would be there on behalf of the sheriff's department or the state police or somebody else.
Where?
Well, if he were to go out to Gaimin Valley or somewhere.
And that's just on a regular call if he gets, yeah, if they call him out and he's on duty and he has to go, the dog would go with him, of course.
Well, I'm saying, you know, oftentimes, these are, these, these type, when you use the dog, oftentimes you're there just as a deterrent, you know, to see, and at the same time see if you find something. And so, it's not like you necessarily, somebody said, well, there's something at school action need to go there, all that, that could happen. But oftentimes, you're going there just to let everybody, as a deterrent to know that it could happen. And if we're monitoring this in case someone would bring in, whether it be a dog or a student for that matter. But I'm just saying, if they were to go somewhere else, if he's the handler, then I'm assuming he's the one that would have to go. And if he were going outside of his jurisdiction, and that gets back to our jurisdiction or insurance and all that, and if there was an additional charge for him to go to school acts, that these other, either state police or the town or West Hamlin or somebody else might pay that cost for him to go, I'm starting to understand.
Well, that's what I asked him, and they, both of them said no. Both of them said no, that they wouldn't be able to do that. The sheriff said he'd love to, but he knew he wouldn't be able to get the money because the commission wouldn't.
Well, you know, when they had the drug dog, I guess the sheriff had it, so therefore he was able to, they could take it anywhere in the county, back to the county, what they were, right?
Yeah, empty when he had it.
Yeah.
And see, that's the thing, that's the deal, when Anthony left, he took the dog with it because nobody wanted the dog.
Right.
So, he, when he went to Milton with Joe, he took the dog with, and then he went to Putten County, he took the dog to Putten County, that's right. But nobody, well, they didn't have manpower up there, the manpower they did have, they couldn't buy, hire none, but nobody wanted to go be a dog handler.
Well, you know, you're-
Because that's, that's a big job. I mean, it's a little kid.
Well, you take responsibility to take care of the dog, you know, it's just like-
It's like having a child.
Yeah, with you all the time.
Yeah. But I think there probably is something we can do. I'll check into it on the insurance about going out of city limits to check. But I mean, you don't pay for what you want to use in all your schools.
Well, what about, I mean-
You want to use the whole county.
But think about this when you're talking to the insurance. Let's say that, that it wasn't, I mean, I don't know, it's complicated, but trying to think three steps ahead. If he goes to LCHS, that's within the city limits, he hits on drugs, he then has reasonable cause to search. Wouldn't have to be Lee, have to be, I mean, the officer with the dog could then search based on the dog's hit, right? Would the situation be different if the, if the dog's handler went not in his policeman capacity, but in his capacity as the handler of the dog? Could there be a rider to the policy such he goes to Gaimin Valley and hits, and then you call in a deputy or a state policeman to come and act on the dog's hit? So, that it would be the deterrent effect that Steve was talking about. And I don't know, I'll leave that up to you, I'm just throwing different scenarios out, but I think if we invest this kind of money, we need to be able to use the dog at least countywide.
Well, I agree, yeah.
Because we start deterring this when they're in grade school. And it, it's a learned behavior. Well, they know they couldn't, they, gosh.
The dog could be there any day.
That's right. And we know what happens when the dog, if he finds anything's there.
Yeah, I agree.
By the time they hit middle school, we can't bring this to school much, other than high school. So, I mean, I want maximum bang for buck, I saw how for you to make it happen. But just find out, I mean, find out if there's an additional cost, if there's a rider for the insurance policy, if there's an exception that can be carved out.
But I'm sure that Barris would be on board.
Oh, as much problem as there is in West Hamlin, I'm sure.
I believe he'd be on board, but anyhow, just pay salary, that's over.
Yeah.
But that's all, you know, the same thing, we don't have to-
Or you have a-
And y'all don't have to put the whole bill on it, they pay the salary, that's over there.
Have a, have a set, set hourly fee for using the dog.
And then, of course, we have to go to other parts of the county, which would be over there too.
Yeah.
The grade school, that'd be all on us.
And you, and you-
On top of us.
Yeah.
And you need a drug dog here in Hamlin. I mean, you can use one here too, right?
We can use one there, yeah.
Well, what I'm getting at, we're going to, we'll let you use a drug dog and we don't pay the trooper or the policeman any extra when he does work for us.
Well, he wants, I've got to give him a raise for a canine pay. I talked to the state police, I think that's what they could do, said it's not convenient. I'm not saying that we would be, you could be in lawsuit.
Well, in other words, we got to find out what you're going to charge.
Too. But that's going to be tough. But he, he is wanting a, more money. We're going to bump him up and, but he wants $2 an hour from the board on top of what we're bumping him up. We got to bump him up for the pay of-
How much we bump, how many hours are we being bumped up for upon to the board?
Oh, just about 100 a week.
I mean, more dogs will, he's going to need more food. I mean, I, I mean, we only have to pay the additional $2 when he's on duty.
And he wants, he wants out of time.
Yeah, his dog's with him all the time, it's-
Oh, oh, okay.
It's dog, what y'all think about, 24 hours a day.
Yeah, okay.
But he's not, yeah, he wants compensation, he'd have to do it anyway, to take care of the kid 24 hours a day.
Okay.
And we've got to, we've got to do, we've got to give him a pay raise, but it's separate from his regular pay. We got to put a canine pay in there separate to cover ourselves. So, we're giving him a raise, but he's also wanting, what he's wanting for the dog, still needs $2 more.
I understand.
But by four. But whenever, and I think, that is, if we get everything worked out with the insurance and stuff like that, and then that covers, you know, about the county too.
Has anyone brought up, have my district here, can we get a dog that's trained both in long sniffing, long related material? both in bomb sniffing or bomb related materials plus bar products?
Now, a bomb, y'all can use the state police, because he's, he's dispatcher now, isn't he? He's stationed here now. Yeah, Sergeant Perry, he's stationed here now, and he has the bomb dog. So that'll be disposable whenever he need it. But I don't think it's a, if it was a drug dog, that'd be great. I don't think they're, I think they're one or the other, I'm not sure.
So what, $4,000 a year? Is that what we're talking about?
Y'all figured it out? But we're not here. All right, well, if it has that door kennel, then you can knock off. That's cheaper, right? Which I had talked to, I didn't, I never thought about that.
I don't think you can leave it.
Leaving the dog out in the cold chain to leash.
Then Sean would have a good story.
Boy's gonna take care of him one later mouth, I'll tell you that.
Well, I mean, you get attached to, if you're around a dog that much.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. But I will check on that insurance. And I think that a situation like that, it would, I think it would, I'm just speculating, but I will check to make sure.
That's, I'm just.
Well, it's a big step for everybody and like this, we all want to be on the same page.
That's the biggest thing I'd like to know is where all he would be able to go, or if would be able to go, whether it's a he or a she. All right, you guys say what you find out.
We'll do.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. We've covered a variety of topics here. Okay, let's go to the administrative section. Have a motion, please. Mr. Wilkinson, second to by, Mr. Curry.
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions or school outings that have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, our request to restrict this item. That activity has been canceled, we learned today. Item C is an out of state traveler, Joanna Elkins, to Orlando, Florida, June 17th to June 23rd, 2019, to attend the HOSA National Leadership Conference. Item D is out of state travel for Kimberly Collins Blair to National Harbor, Maryland, Washington DC area, June 22nd through June 26th, 2019, to attend Model Schools Conference. Item E, out of state travel for Mary Ann Patton to Washington DC, June 22nd through 26th, 2019, to attend Model Schools Conference.
Maggie comments, questions, got any leads on it? If not, is that an all yes after we strike item B? Oh, yes?
Yes.
All right, motion for the finance section.
I'm in.
Rowdy?
Second.
Larry? Ray's not here. Will we have more questions for Ray this evening?
Schedule of invoices totaling $521,081. The attachment invoices are available. The public review is coming up.
Have we had any questions? Call that.
Or call me and I'll call her.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, everybody's had the opportunity prior to this, so I'm guessing that we're standing specific. Ask the finance office. Is that an all yes on the finance audit?
Yeah.
All right, let's go to personnel. Have a motion, please. Fred made the motion and Rowdy seconded that one. Bill?
Item A, employment of short long term substitute professional personnel. Item B, that should be transfer of professional instead of service personnel. Transfer professional personnel. Item C, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item D, leave of absence. And item E, retirements or resignations. Just reminding the board that our next meeting, the 16th, is the one where we vote on personnel. So we need a full membership here. And I also gave you a handout. The ones highlighted in yellow are positions that are vacant now, the ones in green are positions that for next year. If you look at all of theirs, there's about 25 positions that we're going to be trying to fill. But we did, we did get some, some of those math, middle school math, we did get some good moves. At one point, if you were going into middle school, you'd have to have two endorsements. Like, you'd have to have math and science before you could teach math. Yeah, we didn't even know if we got in a situation, or you'd have to have math and social studies, or you could have math and English, and he thought he was going to teach math. And for a lot of students, trying to pass two of those practice tests was almost impossible. And they did change that effective April the 15th, that you only have to pass one of those courses, one of those subject areas. So I think that's going to help us fill some of the math. It was only math by 29.
Was that true of any other subject?
It was all middle school.
Well, I mean, like if you were an English teacher or any other.
Yeah, it's a middle school, yes it was.
You still had to have two areas of.
Right.
Subject areas.
So we've had someone pass the math test that's been serving for a couple of years for us in math, and doing a great job. And so we're going to be able to hire her on the alternative pathway here shortly, go flip the paperwork, some things we've got following with. So we're hoping to get some more people that way.
Now, Bill, back at one of the primaries you talked about, if this upcoming April the 16th meeting, are those only those people who are tenured that are going to be on the agenda? Not the probationary personnel?
No, it'll be, it'll be everything.
Everybody will be on the.
Everybody will be on that one, yes. We have to do it by May 1st, so we do it the 16th. And then we have another meeting April 30th, that way if we, we don't think we've made a mistake, but when we deal with that method, trying to renew the stuff, sometimes we'll miss something, we'll make that correction on the 30th if we win that next.
So you say that all five board members must be attended?
Yes, full board.
All right. Okay, should I have anything else from personnel? Is that an all yes vote on personnel?
Yes.
Let's go to the panelists and turn to the board members. One thing to you, I think Mr. McKibb gave out a letter from Dr. Call, the School Board Association. It was addressed to me and talking to Jeff, but it's our dues for the coming year. And even advice, our dues are going to go up this year. And it also alludes to some different ways that we're going to look at it, trying to provide electronic training. As you all know, we're required to get our seven hours of training in each year. The way this reads, it's, we're going to continue to make, to have these statewide conferences in the fall and spring like they have had. But in addition to that, they seem to be going to, they're looking for some opportunities that might be out there where we can get it online and things like that. I guess that's what they're trying to do. But anyway, our dues are going to increase. According to Dr. Call, this was last done in fiscal year '09, so 10 years later, our dues are going to go up for the School Board Association.
And what were they in 2018? How much are they going up in other words?
It's going up to $317.
And I'll just point out, thanks to certain board members, we, we as a board became a lot more educated in terms of the ways School Board Association was making money and have taken some steps to propel that. Right, Mr. Keesley? So I can understand why there is a dues increase because a lot of members of different boards of education have gained wisdom over certain peoples checking into things. So we as a board have became more creative in terms of making sure that we get the maximum number of hours we can get at minimum cost. So I understand why they're raising the fees. I think at the end of the day, it's still going to result in substantial cost savings to us.
And we paid for the DVD.
We paid that $200.
Can we just not talk about the DVD? My blood still boils over that.
I think that's what kind of inflames that on the DVD. I just hope they don't find another law out there, obscure law that's been in force for 15 or 20 years. All of a sudden, we got to do this.
We have to attend the training session. If you don't, you have to pay for a DVD to watch the training session on DVD. And it wasn't a cheap DVD.
It'd be cheaply made.
The quality left a lot to be desired. The cost was not low. You're right, Mr. Keesley.
I'm not saying anything else. Mr. McKibb, you have one?
I've got a few things I want to share with the board this evening. I want to let you know that the work on Guy Valley's gymnasium is about to start. We are close, talked to Mr. Gosney yesterday. Optimistic that we may even be able to get in there over spring break and start taking the little bleachers out. They, we've had a discussion with the administration at Guy Valley. They are looking to make arrangements, possibly host the graduation and awards assembly, possibly the high school, maybe even over the handling if necessary. Anyway, we're excited about starting that work and having that gym ready to go in the next year.
We already have the new roof, this is new floor and new bleachers, right? And then next, after that is Hamlin, right?
Really excited. Hamlin's next, Hamlin next year.
Got a good one.
Good one. Soccer field bid, I sent you an email. Had one bid, came in at $245,000. So, what was it, did you get a call?
He said, I'll start spreading dirt. He sent me an email today wanting us to buy some weed killer, something to get on there. And I said, well, we'll get back to it. He said eight bags, $40 bag.
We're doing some work over there on the road.
Yeah, I spoke to him last night after the baseball dedication ceremony. He said that some of his ROTC boys are going to be using five gallon buckets to transport dirt filling the halls.
Yeah, we were shocked when we saw the bid.
Just telling you, wow.
Disappointed too, especially that they haven't won, won cutting the bid. The new chiller that I discussed with you, I guess it was last week, at Hamlin, it's now on site, it's been installed. According to Mr. Gosney, by Friday thinks it'd be up in operation just in time, supposed to be 80 degrees up.
All right.
By the end of the week.
I saw him deliver.
I was picturing something like at the high school, it's probably half the size.
What's going on this morning, $50?
I think it's $55,000 and I'm being a bit of a most of the most of the situation. There is a man in the country that's out there. Significant savings in fact. Now I'm looking for a board member volunteer. This ought to be interesting. Y'all knock me down, but sign up here.
Nominate Carol. Go ahead.
They will do the nomination. I think Bill Gordon still nominated Carol.
We, through the CEFP, the Comprehensive Educational Facilities Planning Process, it's that time again. 10 years goes by quickly. So we're beginning the process, which starts with the hiring of an architect firm to lead that work. So with that, we're required to conduct interviews and we've had four firms to contact us with matters of interest and they've provided materials, written materials. And anyway, I've set up these interviews for this Friday. I know it's short notice, but this all kind of came together hurriedly. But we're going to, I need item A board member to serve.
What time on Friday?
Starts at nine.
Ends by?
The last interview's at one. So yeah, it's all there.
I could have given you a morning, but Friday, I had, I'm sorry.
No, but that's, that's fine. But that's, you know, there's four, four firms that we'll interview and we'll rank order those, those firms based upon those interviews from the highest to lowest and then begin the negotiation process and how much the architectural, architectural firms are going to charge for their services to lead the development of the city.
Interviews are what, nine, 10, 11 and one?
That's right.
Not that I really want to volunteer, but I could do nine and 10 Friday morning and someone else could do 11 and one. Unless one of y'all wants to do all four, it kind of makes sense for somebody to do all four. So you see all four of them. But I have longstanding plans and I've got a buddy coming for five hours to help me build stuff this weekend if I can, so.
You're thirty-nine, Carol? I was excited.
All right, Mr. McKibb, we've talked about this. I told you, I was, that's in the, unless someone wanted to do it, which I knew that no one wanted to, you know, didn't want to do it, but.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting on a phone call. I may have sort of heard Friday.
I'll be there, or I'm going to hopefully be there. But I think what, the same person needs to be there.
All four for continuity.
I want two more dollars a nap.
And a kid sidekicks.
Diet heavy supplement, uniform supplement.
Well, you know, that dog's going to get $2 in there raised too.
He gets, picks what kind of food he likes, he or she wants.
Contract with the.
Yeah. But when the town of Hamlin uses him, he can get a $2 in there raised.
It's not just we can use, that ain't going to be a 24 hour day, $2 nap, right? Since the dog's always available?
I got to thinking about that, Jeff, but Jeff was telling me it's a 40 hour work week. I said, well, he's once in 24 hours, is he seen in 24 times a day?
We'll talk, yes, now.
That dog sleeps though. He's up watching that dog all the time. That dog sleeps sometimes.
I'll see if I can be probably.
You'd be better off having a weekly raid or something. I like to wager hours. What else you got, Mr. McKibb?
That's all I have.
Okay, everyone, I guess we're going to adjourn and go. Everybody's going to be here Tuesday, April the 16th, 2019, 6:00 PM. Motion, Curry? Major? All yes?
Yes.